It's time I like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM and welcome everybody to the City of Glendora Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. For the audience here tonight, my name is Brian Faber and I am the Chair and serve as the Presiding Officer over the Planning Commission meeting. In consideration of others and the business conducted tonight, please silence your phones and any electronic devices and refrain from speaking unless organized. If you are in attendance and wish to speak during public comment and/or public hearing, speaker cards are located in the lobby at the rear of the chamber. Please fill out a card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of public comment and/or public hearing. Again, this is a public meeting for the community of Glendora. We appreciate and respect your participation here this evening. At this time, I'll request oral roll call to be conducted.
So thank you. At this time, I'd like to conduct an oral roll call and request that each member respond with present when their name is called. Commissioner Davis is absent. Commissioner Cos?
Present.
Commissioner Norwood?
Present.
Vice Chair Crimmens?
Present.
Chair Faber?
Present.
Let the record show, four members are present.
All right, at this time, Commissioner Norwood would just like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the state of Pennsylvania, the republic, and the one nation that we come to live in.
Does anyone wish to reorder or add to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move we'll move to public comment. At this time, I'm going to open the public comment period. Members of the public to address the legislative body. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once on both on and off agenda items. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of the public comment period. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium, state your name and subject matter you wish to discuss. At this time, I'll invite anybody from the public to come up and speak if they choose.
We do have one here. Just, yeah, go ahead and stand up and just say your name and then if you can give that to me after.
Here to talk about the Meyer project on Bluebird Hill. And I own the property that borders on Andrew and Gladys's property on two.
Sorry, we do have a public hearing tonight. Do you want to speak during that item? This is all the whole agenda.
Okay, so I'll speak then.
Okay, so you want to put a public comment for, a public testimony for the public hearing?
No, I want to talk to the Meyer project in particular.
Item number three? Yeah. Would you like to speak then?
Yeah.
Okay, because you only speak once. That's why I'm asking.
So I'll wait till then.
Yes, okay.
Sounds good. If there's anybody else wishing to comment on any items on or off the agenda, but mostly off the agenda at this point. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period. At this time, I'm going to invite any commissioner's statements or reports. Commissioner Cos? Commissioner Norwood?
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Crimmens?
Nothing to report this evening.
Right. It's time I'll invite the Community Director Jeff Kugold or in the Assistant City Attorney Judy Baladi, maybe, to if there's any comments.
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Judy Baladi. I'm the new Assistant City Attorney. Really excited and honored to be serving in this role and I'm here as a resource and to assist. And you'll be hearing more from me as it's the new year with a legislative update. Yeah, that's it.
And I just want to just get a couple of announcements on progress that the Planning Division is making on some advanced planning projects and some construction projects. The, you'll remember there's a, let's say, 31 unit housing development near Bonnie Cove and the 210 freeway on the south, just on the south side. That development is starting construction. So you'll see some earth moving going on at the beginning phases of the project that's starting right now. And has been going on for the last few weeks. Also, I wanted to announce, you'll remember, we've been updating different sections of the general plan. We updated the housing element. We also initiated an update to the safety element of the general plan, which is a timely thing to do. We had to do it to comply with state law, but also it's the intention of the safety element is to do planning in the city that takes into account and to and mitigates, you know, natural property damage, life and limb damage from natural disasters, natural hazards, and which is timely since we're having a major windstorm right now. So we're updating, the state of California has just approved our safety element. And so that will come to the Commission for your recommendation of approval to the City Council. I will say it might be a few months because it also gets approved at the same time the city's local hazard mitigation plan. And that is the city's plan to respond to emergency disasters. That's the plan that mobilizes the, you know, the first responders and other resources too. So those plans, that plan is also going to come, well, that plan will go to the council, but the safety element will come to the, to the Planning Commission. So expect that in a few months and wanted to let you know that the state has approved our safety element. Also, on the work on our objective design guidelines, is we, that's a project we've been working on. I think we and has been on the senior, the principal planner has made a few presentations on the progress of that plan. Or those, that project and we're, we're heading toward, we have a, should be about an 80% draft of that document done. And so that'll be coming to the Planning Commission for your recommendation in the next few months as well. And lastly, I wanted to mention that the grant that the city got from LA County Metro to do long range sort of visioning, planning around the Gold Line Station, that project is also moving along and will be coming to the Commission in a final version in the next few months as well. So that is all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Jeff, for the update. At this time, we're going to move into public hearing. Item number two, a development plan review application and conditional use permit to allow for an express car wash redevelopment of the site located at 1717 South Grand Avenue, project file number PLN 22-0036. At this time, I declare the public hearing open. At this time, I'll invite Assistant, the City Assistant Planner, Aaron Seans, to report.
Good evening, Chair Faber and members of the Commission. Before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit and development plan review to allow an express car wash at 17, 17 South Grand. And that is located within the Arrow Highway, specific plan zone C, C3, which is a commercial zone. You can see here in the vicinity map, it's located at the intersection of Laxford Street and Grand Avenue. And that was formerly developed with a 200, or sorry, 2,352 square foot restaurant. That was demolished to accommodate the new car wash facility and it was also vacant for several years, if, if you recall. The proposed project will feature a 6,913 square foot building, including a car wash tunnel, parking areas, vacuum stations, approximately 8,588 square feet of landscaping that will be under a separate review. As well as improved widening and onsite entry off of Laxford Street. And as well as some roadway improvements to facilitate left and right hand turns on Laxford Street, turning onto Grand Avenue. This slide here shows a site plan. This, our code currently requires about eight to 10 cars to be, excuse me, sorry. Our code requires stacking space for about eight to 10 cars. This plan exceeds that and approximately accommodates 14 vehicles for queuing along Laxford Street. So it should not be backing up vehicles onto Grand Avenue as well as the applicant. As part of this project, prepared a local transportation analysis, which indicated that there would be no significant impacts on the level of service from trips generated from, from the site. These next sites feature the elevations for the building. The project architect, Sipan, I'm sorry to butcher his last name, Nazarian, is present to speak more on the design of the building. But as mentioned, it is a express car wash that features a long tunnel. But there are changes in elevations to break up the facade of the building. Along with these elevations, there are elevations for the kiosk, an entryway to the car wash, as well as parking canopy elevations where vacuums, et cetera, will be located. The following slide shows a conceptual landscape area. The final water efficient landscape plans will be submitted if the project is approved to comply with the water efficient landscape ordinance in place by the state and the city. On December 26, 2024, notices were mailed out to property owners within 300 feet, as well as the notice being posted within the San Gabriel Valley Examiner. Excuse me. Finally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct the hearing, accept testimony and consider and adopt a categorical exemption in the resolution approving the DPR for the car wash and the CUP for the car wash use. Mr. Sipan Nazarian is present along with the property owner Cedric Akimian. And Michael is available via Zoom, which is one of the consultants on the project for, for any questions you should have.
Thank you, Aaron. At this time, I'd like to invite the owner, owner, architect, or whoever else is on the call if they'd like to. If they're present, if they'd like to speak and remind them they have 10 minutes to talk.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Sipan Nazarian. I'm the designer for the project. Think of, just want to give a background. We've been working on this project for about three years. So it's been an extensive, extensive process. We're, we're used to it. This would be my, if it gets approved, I've designed and built seven of these express car washes. So we've got pretty good experience over the years of what's required. And I wanted to talk mostly about the design of the building. It's, it's pretty big and there's a reason we, we had done it that way. A lot of times with these express car washes, the main concern we always address is for, for the public is noise and traffic. And also being able to maintain the look of the car wash because it's always wet. The owner was very adamant about building a bigger car wash, which is going to cost us more money. It doesn't necessarily help us wash more cars or gain us any real estate because it's primarily the width of the building. But the reason we've done that is to muffle the noise. We've also separated the vacuum, so sorry, the blowers in a separate room. We have divider walls lined with acoustic, it's called acoustic block paneling. Super expensive, but it, it does a great job at blocking out the noise. We've put the blowers in a, in an attic kind of space. That's also been to muffle the noise. And the width of the building, aside from muffling the noise, it also creates a separation between the car wash equipment, which is spraying the water and the facades, which we have a lot of glass in this building, which typically doesn't work well with express car washes because, because it's, I mean, we were following the guidelines. We wanted to look like a nice building, but what happens is that overspray will go on the windows and it's almost impossible to maintain that all the time. But by having a wide building that's 37 feet wide inside the area where the, the wet equipment is, that gives you substantial amount of area to not have that overspray. And what happens is that overspray will go on the, onto the windows, seep through the weep holes, and then it'll just drain on the building. And within two, three months, you have like these really ugly water and calcium stains on the building. So that was the reason we had done this, just learning from our past experiences. Not every site you have that ability. A lot of times we deal with narrower sites that don't have the ability to accommodate these kinds of design features. But that was, that was our main reasoning for that. Aaron mentioned, we have great queuing capacity for the building. We specifically wanted the entrance and exit to, entrance to be off of Laxford Street, allowing cars to turn in. Does that way, if you, if you have a situation where someone's trying to come in and come out, you don't cause traffic on the main street, which is a safety issue as well. We kind of funnel the cars in, in an S shape. And then they come to the vacuum stations, which is self-serve vacuums, and then they exit out. We also are proposing roughly 9,500 square feet of solar panels on the, the building, as well as the parking canopy roofs. And yeah, that was, that was pretty much it. If you guys have any questions in regards to the design or any technical questions, I'm free to answer.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open the public testimony and invite members of the public. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking only on this agenda item. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of the public testimony period. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium and state your name to speak on this public hearing item. Are there any speakers in the audience who would like to speak on this item?
I don't see any and I don't have any for this public hearing.
All right, at this time, I'll close.
Can I just ask, well, just for the record, we didn't state it, there was a revised resolution that was provided to the Commission on the third and it's made available to the public that, that replaces the one that was made originally in the packet.
Perfect, thank you. At this time, I'm going to close public testimony portion of the hearing. And I'll invite Sipan or if, or if Aaron, if anybody needs to come say anything else, but you do not need to. I'm going to guess no. So I'm going to close the public hearing and we're now going to open discussion and deliberations from the Commission. Commissioner Cos?
I just had a question. I don't know if it's something that our, our planning department can answer or if it's something that the designer needs to answer. I'm curious about the water situation, where, how, how that's going to be handled, especially given the demands of, you know, we already, we're in a water situation right now, obviously with drought and such. So how is the water situation going to be handled?
Again, I'm glad you asked. That was one of the main things I forgot to mention. These express car washes compared to the full serve car washes that you see all over the, from before. They're very efficient in terms of water, in terms of electricity too. These things used to have like hydraulic power packs that would explode inside the tunnel. You would get contamination. They've completely eliminated that. Almost every company now uses all electric. Doing one in Glendale right now, that's a completely all electric building, actually. We have no gas, no, it's all same solar panels. And in terms of the water, we have a reclaim system. So when the car enters that tunnel and a lot of the design also for these car washes, it's very difficult to kind of do something super creative because you have a straight shot that you go inside the tunnel and the car is pulled on a conveyor. The conveyor is inside a tunnel, inside a pit, which was, the slab is about a three foot by three foot pit where all the water will run through. That water will go to reclaim tanks. They're clear, they're almost like giant grease interceptors. They're clarifier tanks. We have two 2,000 gallon tanks with six chambers. The water will go through those chambers and then at the last chamber will have two suction lines, a spare and then a main line, which draws that water back and then that's reused in the car wash and that's a constant cycle. We're able to with a little bit of evaporation between 85, 90% of that water is being able to get recirculated through the tunnel and then used on the car. So this is super efficient.
Okay, so you're able to reuse the water that you're in a continual basis. Okay, yeah, that was, that was a big question I had. The other question I had regarding the landscaping plan.
Yes.
Is, is there, apparently that's not complete yet or you're not?
It was conceptual. They would, they would, we would ask to do a conceptual plan, but that's going to be, we're going to have a full landscape plan required for it. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was, those were, that was my only question. That lot has been vacant for quite a while. And so it's, it's kind of good to see something going in there. But that was my only question about the water.
Thank you. Commissioner Norwood?
I'm not sure if I have a quick, can we go back to the picture of the lot, please? Yeah, the aerial, there you go. Okay. So there, it looks like a driveway, I guess I'm, that's west, that feeds some businesses. I'm not, I don't know if you're going to have such a queue line that's going to filter out there, but obviously we, the businesses and homeowners were notified within 300 feet and we didn't receive any complaints or, I mean, if I lived next door to it, I'd be concerned about the traffic coming out, so, or blocking that driveway. But maybe the queue line is deep enough within the property to, to mitigate that because it is a dual lane.
One of, one of the reasons was that we wanted to do a dual lane to accommodate more cars. Typically on these express car washes, if you can get seven, around seven cars queuing, it's the minimum that we, that, that's, that we shoot for. But by getting the double lane, we're able to get comfortably 13 cars on the site, which is literally double. I mean, if in the drawings, we always put the full amount of cars. But if you ever have that situation, that's a pretty successful car wash. We're hoping for that, but I don't think you'll ever have that situation. You get, you get like rush hours where people are coming in, but the express car washer, you can be in and out of there from the line, wash your car and get out if you don't vacuum in five minutes. So you don't create that.
What appears to be that driveway, I'm guessing that's west, if you go back to the picture.
Yeah, it's next to, next to us. So it's a wide, I think it's about.
Yeah, so that, there's no, no alterations, changes of that particular driveway or whatever.
That's like, I think it's a secondary driveway feeding, because it's industrial spaces. I think it's more like a truck area because they have another entrance off of Grand on the south.
Southwest, okay.
Southwest, east side, sorry.
Okay, that was my only concern was this, just the, the queue going in and, I mean, the, the residents were notified. So they've had opportunities to respond and, and come and speak their mind, so.
We haven't, we didn't get any, any signatures, but the owner did go door to door about a year, a year and a half ago, knocking on the doors. And everyone was ecstatic that something was getting built here and they were happy about the express car wash.
Okay, that's all I had.
We'll come back to Commissioner Crimmens, Vice Chair Crimmens comes back. The, I'm like said, it's been vacant for a while, so I think that's great. Something's going there. The only thing I noticed on the plan, just, it looks like there's one EV charging station. Is that, that's a requirement?
Yes, we have one.
And then it, it looks like it's in a handicap spot. That may just be an error of location as it should be probably accessible to everybody.
Yeah, typically, I mean, when we get these, it's, we have a rule that cars should be out of there with the vacuums in five minutes. So we.
Don't really use it too much anyway, right?
Yeah, it's a kind of like, we just have to, obviously because of code.
Gotcha.
But yeah, we have, we, there was always signs to be in and out of there within five minutes. Obviously, we're not going to kick out customers, but they get used to the fact that it's five minutes vacuuming and you're out.
The, the, the building official will obviously look at that. They're in charge of the ADA compliance. I do know in, in some cases, the charging stations do need, need to be ADA width and lighting, but I'm not sure if they have to be marked.
If they have the charging station in a handicap parking space, then other people can't use it.
Maybe they.
Again, the, the building official will look that over.
Catching up to building official. I'm going to guess Commissioner Crimmens didn't have any points, otherwise he would have sent us a message or told us something. So I think at this time, I'm guessing, I'm guessing I can close the, the public hearing, right, or the request of motion. Yeah, we're going to request a motion.
Maybe not the, you'll take the vote with the three you have.
Out on a call here, so.
Yeah.
Well, or if, I don't believe he had any comments, so we're going to let his comments go and at this time, I'll request a motion.
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Sorry, for the record, it should be to approve the, the resolution subject to the staff provision.
Okay, what she said, I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the resolution subject to the staff provisions.
I will second it.
All right. I guess.
I'll conduct an oral roll call. Commissioner Davis is absent. Commissioner Cos?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Chair Crimmens?
Yes.
Chair Faber?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Right, item number three. All right, moving on to item number three. Consideration of a resolution of the Planning Commission approving a conditional use permit to allow alcohol sales, beer and wine only, for onsite consumption in conjunction with a restaurant, Grape Leaf Greek Cuisine, located at 650 South Grand Avenue, file number PLN 24-0038. At this time, I'm going to invite Planning Technician Kristen Gates to report. Hi, Chris.
Good evening, Chair Faber and the members of the Commission. Before you tonight is the request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow alcohol sales, beer and wine only, for onsite consumption in conjunction with a fast casual restaurant located at 650 South Grand Avenue. Project number is PLN 24-0038. Our recommendations are to adopt a categorical exemption pursuant to CEQA and adopt a Planning Commission resolution approving the proposed project. The restaurant is located in an existing shopping center consisting of three buildings and near the intersection of Grand and Colorado Avenue. The site is zoned grand commercial, sorry, grand commercial gateway with a general plan designation of Route 66 corridor specific plan. With the approval of a CUP, liquor sales onsite consumption only restaurant and for restaurants, fast food with drive-through service within the Route 66 Grand Commercial Gateway are permitted. The business is an existing fast casual restaurant. The hours of operation as provided by the applicant are 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. Alcohol will only be sold for onsite consumption in the dining area and within the restaurant's proposed outdoor patio area. The proposed outdoor dining area is subject to a separate permit. Shown here is the proposed site plan. As previously stated, pursuant to the Glendoric Municipal Code, the proposed use requires a CUP for liquor sales onsite consumption only restaurant and restaurants, fast food with drive-through service to permit the sale of alcohol onsite within the Route 66 Grand Commercial Gateway Zone. Notices were mailed out to all property owners within a 300 foot radius. Notice was also published in the San Gabriel Valley Examiner. To date, staff has received no inquiries regarding the project. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the categorical exemption and the Planning Commission Resolution entitled Resolution of Planning Commission Approving a Conditional Use Permit to Allow Alcohol Sales for Onsite Consumption in Conjunction with a Restaurant Grape Leaf Greek Cuisina, File Number PLN 24-0038. I'm available for any questions. The applicant was not able to be here tonight.
With no applicant here, we'll just move. Oh.
Sorry, we didn't receive your email.
Sorry, well, so.
I received yours.
Okay, yeah, so if you guys have any questions, the applicant and I are both here to answer them.
Yep, I'm guessing Eli Attar? Konstantinos? All right, well, I'll invite Konstantinos to come up and speak if you choose to. You have 10 minutes if you would like to use.
Definitely don't need that much time. Good evening, members of City Council. I am Konstantinos Prusakis. Off the top of my head, just a few points, just want to put out there for, for the city, for everyone. We are the, right now, the only Greek restaurant in the city. Would like all the customers to enjoy the full culinary experience. Would like all the customers to enjoy the full culinary experience. That includes a beer and wine. See, that's one. Two, do a great job y'all doing. No crime rate, or very low, is what I was told and looked up. And number three, let's see. Yes, the, I guess the tight containment, small, should not have, will not have an issue with the local residents residing within 3, 500 or anywhere around there. For the potential outdoor seating is located, I guess, on the, on the opposite side of where the closest residential housing is. And so I don't really see a problem there. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
It's time I'll open public testimony, invite members of the public to come up and speak. Speakers are limited, limited to three minutes, speaking only on this agenda item. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of the public testimony. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium and state your name and speak on this public hearing item. Are there any speakers here or on?
We have received none for this one.
All right. I'm going to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing and invite Konstantinos. If you would like to say anything else, you could come back up or you can save your time if we have questions. All right. Perfect, so we'll, perfect. We'll close the public hearing, and we're going to move to discussion and deliberations from the commission. Commissioner Cos?
I'm just curious, it's on Grand and what?
The nearest intersection is Grand and Colorado. It's in the same shopping center as Broken Yoke.
Oh, okay. I'm just asking because I've never been there and I'd like to try it out. So it's totally just, you know, for my own personal knowledge. But, so it's in the same plaza as Broken Yoke?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Super close.
Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you. Commissioner Norwood?
I have none, thank you.
Commissioner Crimmens?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Yeah, and no comments for me either. Looks like a great restaurant. At this time, ask the request a motion to adopt, I should say it, right? Or, yeah, adopt categorical exemption for the project pursuant to 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC 2025-02 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission Approving a Conditional Use Permit to Allow Alcohol Sales, Beer and Wine Only for Onsite Consumption in Conjunction with a Restaurant, Grape Leaf Greek Cuisina," file number PLN 24-0038.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Oral roll call?
Commissioner Davis is absent. So Commissioner Cos?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Chair Crimmens?
Yes.
Chair Faber?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. It's time, we're going to move on to item number four.
Got to check that place out, okay.
Item number four, the development plan review for a new single-family residence and associated grading on a vacant lot at 1908 Bluebird Road, project file number PLN 24-0016. And at this time, I'll invite Associate Planner Donovan Cullen to report, who I believe is on Zoom.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Faber and commissioners. Tonight before you, we have a proposed development for a new 5,813-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence with a 1,031-square-foot attached garage. Next slide, please. Planning staff is recommending to adopt a categorical exemption pursuant to subsection 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act and to adopt a Planning Commission resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission Approving a Development Review Application for Hillside Development of a New Two-Story Single-Family Residential House and Associated Grading at 1908 Bluebird Road," project file PLN 24-0016. The request, again, is to construct a new single-family residence on a vacant lot. The application was processed as a development plan review in accordance with the findings, standard conditions, and provisions outlined in the Glendora Municipal Code, subsection 21.04.030. Subsection 24, or 21.04.030 outlines the criteria for the purpose of regulating the use of land in hillside areas so that the natural characteristics such as landforms, vegetation, wildlife, scenic qualities, and open space can be substantially maintained. This is the project location. Comes right off of an existing private road through Bluebird Road. The proposed project, again, is the construction of a new two-story, 5,813-square-foot single-family home, proposed new grading, exterior hardscape and driveway landscaping with an attached two-car garage, retaining walls, and it also includes site improvements, utilities, and private onsite sewage disposal systems. Here we have the elevations, just designating some of the measurements from the east and south elevations. And then here we have the west and north elevations, again, just designating some of the heights for scale. Here are the photo simulations that the applicant proposed or provided for us of the proposed view from the front of the home. And then this is the proposed view a little bit further back that shows the entirety of the structure. And then the proposed view from the rear. And then here we have the landscaped area, as we can see, grading and the removal of landscaping has been limited as much as possible so that we can keep the existing landscape and grading of the natural area around the proposed single-family home. Public notices were sent out to all property owners within 300 feet of the site per the Glendora Municipal Code on December 26th. And planning staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a categorical exemption pursuant to subsection 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt a Planning Commission resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission Approving a Development Plan Review Application for Hillside Development of a New Two-Story Single-Family Residential House and Associated Grading at 1908 Bluebird Road," project file number PLN-0016.
Thank you, Donovan. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant, Andrew Meyer, to come up. They have 10 minutes to present if they would like. All right. That one's good. At this time, we're going to open public testimony, invite members of the public. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking only on the agenda item. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of the public testimony period. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium and state your name to speak on the public hearing item. At this time, we'll, if there are others, but at this time, we'll invite Craig Helberg up to speak. And if there's any after that, we'll go with him.
Hello, my name is Craig Helberg, and I own the property that borders on the Myers property on two sides. And I came to know Gladys and Andrew shortly after they bought the property. And in the interim period, we've had numerous conversations on, I'll say, philosophy about living in the hills, what they plan to do and so forth. And I think everything that we've discussed is entirely consistent with our neighborhood. So I'm very supportive of the project, and I think I'll close with that.
You do. Thank you, Craig. Any others wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll, we'll close the public comment, right? All right, we'll invite the applicant, Andrew Meyer, to come back and respond, but I don't think he's here, so I think you're good, correct? All right, perfect. We'll close the public hearing. We'll move to discussions and deliberations from the commission. Commissioner Cos?
So what is the reason for the CEQA exemption? Is it because it's a single-family home? Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's Donovan or who can answer that. But it says you're asking for an exemption to CEQA. What, what is the reason for an exemption?
That is correct. My recollection, the CEQA exemption is for a single-family home on a vacant lot and just mitigating any of the possible environmental, you know, damage that may or may not occur with the construction of the new single-family home.
Okay, so it's just because it's a single residence, okay.
Correct.
The other question I had, just, I'm looking through the conditions and it talks about a, just curious as to why this is needed. Talks about a sign-off from the school district? And I'm just curious as to why that would be needed.
The project does have to pay applicable school fees?
Okay.
For the project?
Okay. And that's why, it says there's a certificate of compliance from the school district? So basically, that they're paying, obviously their property taxes would go to the school district? Is that what that's for?
They pay, every new home, new dwelling within the city pays an impact fee to the school district. The impact of a new house on services that the school district provides through educating kids that may live in the house.
I did not know that. I should have known.
And that's a one, it's a one-time fee that is usually collected. We, it's usually collected directly, you pay it directly to the school district, and then you show proof of paying it to the school district before the city will issue a building permit.
One of the only fees we don't take, they have to show proof of it.
Okay, great. I did not know that. Thank you. Those were my only questions for right now. Thanks.
Commissioner Norwood?
So I've been here long enough, I should know this, but there, we're just approving a development plan review. So usually, we're approving a project. So they haven't quite submitted everything, or we? I guess the language, I think I had read enough of these over the years.
This would be the same as any, it is the development planner review, which is the applicable project.
So you guys already reviewed it, and you guys have made them, dot their i's and cross their t's, and there's some approval, looks like it still needs to go through with the fire department and things like that.
They, their stamped approval is in the, in the application or the files for the plans. They'll have to get subsequent approvals for the construction documents.
Yeah, that was it, okay.
Vice Chair Crimmens?
Nothing for me.
Yeah, I think it's great. I'm glad to hear you got neighbor support already. So that's always nice when you're building a new project. So I think at this time, I'd like to.
Can we also just clarify for the record again that this also had an amended resolution that was provided to the public and to the commission prior to the meeting?
I need to do that.
As well as a revised notice of exemption.
They did, okay, perfect. So at this time, I'll request a motion to adopt categorical exemption pursuant to 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC 2025-03 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission Approving a Development Plan Review Application for Hillside Development of a New Two-Story Single-Family Residential House and Associated Grading at 1908 Bluebird Road, Glendora, California," project file number PLN 24-0016.
I will make a motion.
I'll second.
I'll now conduct an oral roll call. Commissioner Cos?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Chair Crimmens?
Yes.
Chair Faber?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
This time, we'll move on to consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion without individual discussion unless a commissioner has requested it be removed for separate discussion. Does anyone wish to comment on consent calendar item number five? If not, request a motion.
Why not? I'll move for that one, too, since I seem to be doing that tonight.
That's your role tonight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll now conduct an oral roll call. Commissioner Cos?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Chair Crimmens?
Yes.
Chair Faber?
Since I wasn't here, do I vote?
You abstain.
I abstain, I abstain.
We have three, all right, three to one.
All right. Looks like we're already at the end here, so I'll invite commissioners. Do you have any closing statements? Commissioner Cos?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Commissioner Norwood?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Crimmens?
Nothing for me.
I do not have any. Also, give time to Jeff and staff to give you closing statements.
The only thing I have is a reminder, we are going to have a meeting in February, on February 4th. It's looking like we're going to get a legislative update from our new city attorney. Going to, I'll be introducing you to our new newly hired senior planner. Also, we'll have our first public art proposal, and we'll probably have two or three project time extensions.
Did the, I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask, but if not, then tell me no. The two staff who presented tonight, are they new to the city?
Donovan, who is a contract staff person, we, from Willdan. He's been helping us out on current planning. We've had two staff members out on paternity leave, and then we also had a staff member, our senior planner, left, kind of all at the same time. So we hired Willdan to help us with our staffing needs, and he's doing a great job. And he works in a couple other cities as well. So he's a seasoned associate planner. And then Kristen has been an employee with the city for a while. She has been working with the transportation division, and she is working part-time now in planning and part-time in transportation, kind of getting an understanding of both. And she's just took it on perfectly, because I think she did a great job.
Hans is still here, and then Natalie?
Hans is still here. He's our advanced planner. And I'm Aaron.
And then Natalie left.
Natalie did leave us.
Okay.
Thank you for the update. So that, it looks like during the meeting at 7:47.